I'm going to get started. 7:03. Hi, I'm Wendy Brooks. On behalf of Bill TE, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight to tonight's Meet the Candidates Forum. We're very excited to have you. I'm one of the Build leaders. A little background on Build, we're a support organization in TE for parents and guardians who have children with all different types of learning differences. We do this through educating, advocating, and sharing of resources. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Lynch, another Build leader.
Hi, everyone. I just want to remind everybody that we are a nonpartisan nonprofit organization. And as such, we are prohibited from directly or indirectly participating in or intervening in any political campaign on behalf of or in opposition to any candidate for elective public office. Build TE encourages voter participation through our candidate forum. We promote the education of voters and talking to candidates about issues. We encourage community members to vote. Build TE leadership and members may not speak or act on behalf of the organization to endorse a candidate, make a campaign contribution or expenditure for or against a candidate, rate or rank candidates on who is most favorable to our issues, or let candidates use our resources unless they are made equally available to all candidates. Thank you. And so now on to my co-leader, Maggie Gaines.
Hi, everybody. Thank you all for joining us this evening for our candidate forum. Each of the candidates participating in tonight's event has agreed to the format, which I will explain. Here's how the evening will go. The audience will be muted during the discussion, and we ask participating candidates to mute themselves unless it's time to speak. Participants and audience members will be visible to all. Audience members, feel free to keep your cameras on or turn them off if you so desire. We ask that the candidates keep their cameras on. We will begin this evening's forum by allowing each candidate the opportunity to speak for up to two minutes to share who they are and why they are running for school board. Build Leadership has compiled questions that were submitted by our Build members and other community members upon registration. We have prioritized the questions from Build members. In the interest of time, we have consolidated related topics and edited questions for clarity and brevity. We ask the audience for additional questions to be submitted directly to the moderator via a link provided in the Zoom chat, and we'll read if time allows. None of the candidates have seen these questions in advance, but they were each given the topics that we plan to cover in our selected questions. We will give each candidate an opportunity to spend up to two minutes answering each question that is read by me, your moderator. The idea is to give each candidate an opportunity to answer the same question. This is not a debate. We ask that candidates do not use their time to respond to or refute other candidates' answers. Instead, we hope each candidate will use their time to thoughtfully answer the questions and provide the public information about their candidacy. We will try to provide each candidate with a 30-second warning directly via the chat as their time is about to expire, and we will be muting their microphone at the two-minute mark to ensure that each candidate has equal time to answer a question. I will call on each candidate to answer in alphabetical order, and we will take turns reversing the order in which candidates are asked for a response following each question. As I just stated, candidates will have up to two minutes to answer a question, but they do not need to take a full two minutes to respond if they do not wish. In the interest of time, the more concise candidates can be, the better. We can get through more questions. At approximately 8:40, we will begin wrapping up the forum. At that time, we will give each candidate up to two minutes to wrap up any thoughts or share anything else they would like to express to the audience. We plan to end the event at 9:00 p.m. We have asked the candidates to share their websites and social media sites with us so that we can disseminate them to the audience tomorrow. This event is being recorded from beginning to end. We will post the recording on our website and our Facebook page. Please do not record the event yourself. If you see snippets of the forum online, know that it has not been authorized or edited by Build since we will be posting the forum in its entirety. Thank you again to our audience and to our candidates for making the time to have this important discussion. Build is grateful for the opportunity to facilitate this information session for our community. Also, please remember that the leaders of Build and each of our candidates are all volunteers. We are participating in this forum because we all care about our community and the issues affecting our students and school district. Before we begin, we want to remind candidates and board members that this is meant to be a civil discussion. Each candidate or audience member is expected to interact with each participant in respectful and civil manner, to conduct themselves in a way that does not intentionally disparage or defame others, or seek to impose emotional or physical harm, and values each individual's opinions, perspective, and their respective contribution to our TESD community. Absenities, threats, or other hostile actions or words will not be tolerated in the chat or elsewhere in the discussion. Anyone exhibiting such actions will be removed from the Zoom discussion. So let's begin. I'm going to read the first question for all of our candidates, and then I will go through and allow each one... Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, I'm jumping ahead. I really want to get to the questions. I'm going to give each candidate a chance to introduce themselves. So we will start with Yolanda Allen.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Bill TE, for putting together this forum. My name is Yolanda Allen, and I'm running for school board, Region One. I am a 14-year resident of the Tridefern East Town School District. My husband and I have two daughters who attend Conestoga High School, and both girls have gifted IEPs. I know the feeling of parents when your child is acting up in class, and you don't really understand why. Instead of assuming that maybe she's bored in class, you're told that your child needs to see a physician because she may need to be on medication. I watched my happy-go-lucky second grader turn into a mildly depressed kid because she didn't want to tell her mother that she missed portions of recess because she couldn't sit still in class, because she was too disruptive. After an agonizing second-grade school year, I did my research and requested an IEP evaluation for my oldest daughter. I was told that my daughter's behavior was typical for gifted students. Subsequently, she was placed in the challenge program and was provided assignments that matched her ability. At the time, I had been a stay-at-home mom for eight years. I had all the time in the world to work with my daughter and to research what was happening with my kid. Where would she be if I didn't have that kind of time? If I didn't have the network of mothers in our community who could share their mutual experiences? I'm running for office because I think it is important that we continue to support children with special needs, that we meet them where they are and provide the supports they need to thrive and to reach their educational and emotional and social learning goals. Thank you.
I did it. I already did it. I didn't unmute myself. Thank you, Yolanda Allen. Next is Susan Audrain.
Hi, my name is Susan Audrain, TE School District candidate for Region Three. I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, and a critical care nurse. And two of my four grandchildren have learning differences. So I understand what it's like to watch a child struggle in school. And one of the reasons I'm running is I want to ensure that the resources are there to support every child, whether from the most challenged to the most gifted, so that the resources are there so they can achieve their highest potential, which I believe is our responsibility as a community and as society. I have a long background of eight years as a hospital department administrator, where I have experienced challenging situations where I had to go into a situation where the chairman had just resigned, and I had to develop mechanisms and processes and identify root causes and action plans to correct that. And I plan to use those critical thinking and problem-solving skills as a school board director if I should be elected. Also, I want to foster transparency financially and establish more accountability financially in the school district. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Leslie Elkin.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Harvey Elkin. I am school board candidate for Region One. I hope to add growth mindset and relevant local experience to the school board. I'm a lifetime resident of TE, a K-12 graduate of TE schools and the Challenge Program, and I'm a career educator with a master's from University of Pennsylvania in secondary education with pre-K through university experience. I've taught in both Downingtown and TE school districts, creating inclusive classrooms that value and honor all learners. I have long-term experience running IEPs and 504 plans well. I'm currently at Eastern University, working with a very diverse population, many with Section 504 accommodations. If chosen to serve, I will be the only active classroom teacher on the board. More importantly, though, I am the very proud mother of Kirsten Elkin, who was identified by our district in first grade at New Eagle with encoding and decoding learning differences resulting in an IEP. Here's the file. She worked daily with her classroom teachers and support teachers and did experiences such as reading camp. Her exceptions included spelling and later foreign language, and she had many accommodations to honor her learning style. She was inappropriately remediated in middle school by standardized testing. On the seventh-grade Williamsburg trip, my daughter was the target of a significant bullying incident resulting in the district suspending one student and putting bullying on two others' permanent records. She completed her education at a local private school where she thrived both emotionally and academically. We petitioned for her to take her ACT in five parts, resulting in acceptance to schools, including Syracuse and Moore College of Art and Design. She is currently a senior at KU with a strong GPA, completing her student teaching, creating a classroom of skill and compassion. She is my hero and an amazing example of self-adversity, understanding self-worth, resilience, and work ethic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Rachel Kill.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Rachel Kill, and I'm running for school board director in Tridefern East Town, Region Three. I was very involved in the bipartisan group of parents who worked together last winter to open our schools after the current school board failed to do so, resulting in a learning loss and mental health crisis that we could have avoided. It was because of my involvement in this group that I was asked by members of the community to run. Prior to this, I was not involved in local politics. I did not even know about the local Republican and Democratic Committees who find candidates and push them forward. I am not a politician. I am an involved parent. I have 17 years of credit and financial underwriting experience, and I have already been involved attending school board meetings and finance committee meetings, asking questions and educating the public about what is happening with our money. I am working on forming a bipartisan group of community members who want to know why their taxes have increased for 17 years straight and have questions about how the numbers are presented in order to do so. This is something I will continue to do as a school board member in order to increase transparency and financial literacy, to gain more community involvement in financial decisions. I am also the mother of two young children, one of which who has special needs and an IEP with the district. Our journey as a special needs family has been a very difficult one. Managing my son's care through endless doctor's appointments, therapy sessions, and the struggles to find his place in the community among friends and peers is one of the reasons I currently look much older than I actually am. I understand the struggles of families in this community. As a school board member, I will be an advocate for organizations like Build to ensure they have a voice, and I will work to repeal unfair policy changes set in place in an attempt to mute Build's voice in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we should have Bill Nolan, but I know he was having a little technical difficulty getting on. So I don't believe he's on, so I'm going to move to the next candidate, who is Maryann Pichoni. And go ahead and unmute yourself, Maryann. Sorry.
I'm Maryann Pichoni, a candidate for TE School Board, Region Three, at the request of Reverend Kyle Boyer, who is a retiring board member. My journey began in the Germantown neighborhood of Philadelphia when my friends and I recognized that we needed a preschool and afternoon kindergarten. The school district did not provide those options, so we gathered together and decided who would perform the functions needed to start a school. I was the only mother with a business degree as a graduate of Temple University, and so I became the accounting manager in charge of hiring a teacher, preparing the budget, and collecting the tuition. I then was asked to be the accounting manager for Building Block's Child Development Center at La Salle University, for Southwest Germantown Community Development Corporation, for Southwest Germantown Federal Credit Union, and for Hunting Park West Partners. These were neighborhood nonprofits providing education, job and business opportunities, and housing and credit availability for our inner-city neighbors. I also served as the PTA president at St. Francis of Assisi School. My family and I moved to Paoli in 1985 specifically to attend TE schools. I volunteered at the schools and became a Girl Scout leader and Boy Scout volunteer. I've been a religious education teacher for public school students at St. Norbert Parish for 35 consecutive years. I've served on the Board of Directors for the Regional Girl Scout Council, now known as Girl Scouts of Southeastern Pennsylvania. I've been honored at the East Town Tricentennial Celebration as Paoli's noteworthy citizen for my work with our youth. As the Development Director for the East Town Library and Information Center, I managed the $4 million rebuilding campaign. Following that success, I managed the $4.5 million campaign to build the St. Catherine Jackson Mission Center in Ben Salem. When I retired, my husband and I became foster parents through Catholic Social Services. I look back on these experiences, and I see that my entire journey came about...
Oh, Maryann, you got muted again some way.
There you go. Don't know why, but I was just wrapping up, saying that I see that my entire journey...
I'm sorry. Your time is over. That's why. Okay, and now we will go on to Robert Singh.
Good evening. My name is Robert Singh. I'm a resident of Chesterbrook, husband, father to three children, two of whom have graduated from Conestoga, and one is a current junior. Professionally and as a career, I'm a vascular surgeon, though I've retired from active practice. Therefore, I have the time to dedicate to the school board. I own and operate a business in southeastern PA, in around a couple of counties here, with four different offices, and therefore I'm very familiar with budgets and costs contained. I'm running for school board in Region Two to bring my experience both as a physician and a business owner to the board. I was educated in the public school system, from kindergarten all the way to college. I understand what a good public education can do for you. And to be perfectly clear, we do have a good educational system here in our district. It's not perfect, nor do we expect it to be perfect, but instead, we can work towards that goal. Thank you for inviting me here to Build. I appreciate the opportunity. My experience with special needs is I do have a niece that was born with spastic pachyia, which is a form of cerebral palsy. This was the early '90s, way before the Americans with Disabilities Act. Watching her physically struggle in a school was heartbreaking. That eventually led to learning dysfunction. But back then, it was difficult to even ask for help. So the evolution from the '90s to now is great, but we know we have a ways to go. I'm used to working in environments with different viewpoints, and the most important part of that is to be able to listen, to see, to analyze, and make a decision. It is easy to be critical. It is easy to point out mistakes. It's hard to develop ideas, vet them, build consensus, and implement them. My motivation remains for the physical and the mental well-being for all of our children. I intend to bring the same diligence, care, and work ethic as a physician to serving our community in the role of school board director. This is why I'm running for school. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll go on to Deanna Wong.
Good evening. I'm Deanna Wong. I'm running for the school board from Region Two. I have lived here in two different township for 12 years. I have two kids growing up in TE School District. My daughter's in seventh grade in TE Middle School, and my son just graduated from Conestoga last year. I have two master degrees, one in science and one in business administration, and I'm also a certified product manager, which make me a very skilled team leader who listens very well and able to put people work together towards a common goal. As a leader from a minority parent group, KPA TE, I understand how important it is for our parent organizations to have a collective voice that can serve our members when communicating with the school and administration. I have witnessed how our current school administration and board suppressed that voice from the parent organization last year. I was part of that fight. So I see what you see and I feel what you feel. I will commit to repeal and to reverse the change of the policy 1131 that impacted most of the parent organization, and I will also advocate for the parents with the special needs students and to form that strong partnership with the school district to provide the vast education service that all of our children deserve. So I wanted to advocate for that. I wonder if other candidates will make that commitment for you. The conversation that I had recently with Maggie really opens my eyes, really gave me a new perspective to understand the neurodiversity of this community. So I will commit to promoting that diversity for all students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to get to our first question. So I will read the question, and then we will post it in the chat, so each candidate can see the question as they answer. "The Individuals with Disabilities Act, or IDEA, is a federal law that was first passed in 1975, guaranteeing students with disabilities in public schools equal access to education. The law was updated in 1990 and has been reauthorized by Congress since then. It is the foundation of modern special education programming and services. Can you explain for our audience what your understanding of this law is with regard to the rights of students with disabilities, as well as your understanding of the responsibilities under this law of school districts in order to educate students with special education needs? If you're unfamiliar with IDEA, can you please share your plans for how you will educate yourself in this important law if you are elected?" And I will start with Deanna.
Okay. Okay, I have to be honest. I'm not completely familiar with the law, but I did have a lot of conversations with parents with that special needs students in order to understand, you know, that equity for the students in the public school system to have the equal access to the education. So I'm strongly supporting in that equity for those students. I believe the equality for the opportunity, meaning to provide all the adequate resources to the students with their diversified need in all different directions, whether they are gifted, whether they need extra support, whether they need tailored, customized program so that they can learn in their own way and to strive for the vast they can be. So I believe that resources provided to those students is needed and should be supported. For our school district, my son was involved in the gifted program when he was in Hillside Elementary School. That was my interaction and knowledge about the program. I really appreciated that he was evaluated and provided that challenge and that tailored program so that he can have different exposure to what he was gifted with. And I believe our TE school district really provide good programs to support those students. However, I also learned there are opportunities for students with neurodiversity that can be placed in the classrooms to be among with other students, so that I wish that can be discussed in depth so that all of our community and students can have the opportunity.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We are going to move on to the next candidate, Robert Singh.
Thank you. You know, I think this law is considered so important that in the Pennsylvania Department of Education, we are obligated to provide special education mandated. And as we know over the years, what has happened is this mandate comes with underfunding. And so what happens is we have an obligation to provide equal opportunity for our students with physical, emotional, and learning disabilities, or on the gifted side as well, to provide the resources that they need. And in order to do so, I think school districts have struggled to keep up their budgets with this increasing demand. I know here in TE, over the last five years, this population of special needs students have increased about 6%. So although there is an increase in special needs and special needs student, the budget, the amount of money that's there to provide for it, and frankly, the resources that are needed, certainly we could use more one-on-one. Certainly, we could use more special education teachers and resources. And I think there have been programs that have been instituted by this district to make that. But perhaps even more so, the emotional regulation issues that occur in some students, I don't know if the district has that capability to understand that. So the evolution of this pact from the 1970s to 2021 has to be reviewed, has to be updated, and the district has to have resources to keep up.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we will hear from Maryann Pichoni.
Thank you. The federal law has impacted my work with the Chester County Early Intervention Case Management Unit when I was a foster parent. The policy guidelines that I followed related to individualized family service plan, inclusion, language and speech development, least restrictive environment, mutually agreed-upon written arrangements, multidisciplinary evaluation, multidisciplinary team processes, mediation, mental health, mental retardation, and with the Office of Child Development and Early Learning Policies, Service Coordinator, case management relations, transition from one early intervention service to another. Though I don't purport to be a special education professional, I can rely on this experience along with interacting with parent organizations such as Build TE to inform my actions and decisions for policy development relating to special education. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, I don't believe that we have Bill on the line yet, so we're going to move to Rachel Kill.
Thank you, Maggie. So as far as IDEA goes, I'm going to mention two main things as far as what my understanding of IDEA is, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about equity, which I think falls very much in line with IDEA. So IDEA is the least restrictive environment and the need for students to be able to participate with their differently-abled peers. In addition to that, there's a need for evidence-based instruction and goals with very high expectations for students under IDEA. So talking about equity, you know, it's a very interesting word because based on our own personal backgrounds and experiences, we have different views of what this means and how it should be implemented. I feel strongly about equity in general, and I believe that our district speaks a lot about equity but doesn't apply the tenants in all areas, mainly instructional equity. For example, we had 39 merit scholars, which is absolutely fantastic. Congratulations to us. But were the instructional resources provided to these scholars equitable to the resources provided to the children with special needs? I think a lot of people here would say the answer to that question is no. There's also a segregation issue we need to address when it comes to special education and equity. The fact that we segregate students across the district to separate classrooms goes against the principles of instructional equity. What I'm talking about here is pulling children out of the regular education classrooms to attend a special education classroom with special needs students, and also going as far as having children attend schools within the district that they aren't even zoned for, getting educated away from their neighbors. Inequity for neurodiverse groups... Inequity for neurodiverse groups, physically diverse groups, and socioeconomically diverse groups need to be included when our district discusses equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Leslie Elkin.
My answer is going to be pretty quick. I look at this as both the mother of a child who's had an IEP and a classroom teacher. So with these laws, to me, it has to do with when an IEP is created, it's a legally binding document, right? So as a parent, I have rights that come with that and my child does. And as a teacher in the classroom, I am legally bound to follow what's called for in the IEP. So with Rachel, I agree, this is an inclusion and an equity issue. And I will say, from looking at the way TE has handled things in the past, we do some things well. But I think partnering with a group like Build TE to become even stronger in our ability to be inclusive and to offer least restrictive environment and to be equitable to grow all these children to the best of their potential is something that Tridifern East Town can work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Susan Audrin.
My understanding of the IDEA law is that the school district has a responsibility to identify the needs of each student and to provide the resources that are needed for that student to succeed. That could be on a very minimal level, just some help with some speech therapy, or it could even expand to some severe special resources. Across the last several years, we've had an increase of 16% in special education needs in Pennsylvania, not just the TE school district. But the funding, the expense for that has increased 104%. So we're not currently providing at the state level the amount of resources that's needed. And I think that the public needs to be aware of that so that we can advocate at the state level so that we can get the funding that we need. Recently, the state said that those with special needs could have an extra year because due to COVID, they did not get that one, their last year of schooling. So the amount of that, the cost for that is $400,000 for this year. So the school district will have funds available through the American Rescue Plan to address those needs. But we need to address those needs and the funding over the long term, not just the short term federal funding.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll hear from Yolanda Allen.
So I pretty much agree with a lot of what has already been said. I'm not as familiar with all of the ins and outs of the IDEA. But just from my understanding, it really is the school's responsibility to identify students that have special needs and meet them where they are so that they can achieve academic success. I think it's interesting that, you know, with a lot of the policies and the mandates that come down from the federal government and the state, in addition to the fact that we've seen an increase in special education needs, 16%, I think a conversation really does need to happen around how it's going to be funded. I am a true, because of my kids and other kids, especially those that I work with on a daily basis, have special needs, they need to be supported in every way possible. But I think what's missing from this conversation is how it's going to be paid for. And I think there needs to be a lot of pressure on the state legislature to make sure that, you know, that school districts receive the adequate amount of funding to, you know, to support our students. And so that's my added value to the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the next question. "Special education costs have risen consistently for school districts across our state. The TESD administration has cited special education costs as a major cost driver for our school district, and the school board has cited these costs, among others, as a reason for raising taxes. What ideas do you have to manage the escalating costs while also ensuring the sustainability of special education in our district as the school board deals with issues related to the budget? What personal experience or expertise can you bring to addressing these issues?" And we are going to start with Yolanda Allen.
Well, this is kind of what I'd already alluded to in the fact that, you know, we have these, that education cost has gone up and yet we, our taxpayers are burdened with, you know, with paying for, paying for education and filling in the gap. I think that if we can just look at the data, you know, the state of Pennsylvania has dropped to 45th in the share of the district revenues that come from the state. That puts us sixth from the bottom. You know, our students and the local taxpayers deserve better than that. I think, again, as I stated earlier, that there has to, we have to work collaboratively with our state legislators, our senators. We have to apply pressure on them to ensure that, you know, when they're in the state house, that they're advocating for local funding of school systems. And in addition to that, I think it's incumbent upon us to put the word out to our, you know, to our taxpayers that this is exactly what's happening. Because a lot of times what happens is, you know, residents think we're just raising taxes just because, but that's not the case. In order for us to maintain, you know, our standing in the nation and in the state as, you know, Tridifern East Town School District, you know, we have to, someone has to pay for this education. And I think that, you know, there needs to be a lot of advocacy at the state house around funding local school districts. And I am, and just one last thing, my experience in government, you know, makes me well positioned to advocate for our school district.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Susan Audrin.
I agree with Yolanda that we have some serious underfunding issues from the state. And I think the public needs to be aware of those underfunded issues so that we can begin to advocate and apply pressure at the state level. But it's more than that. There are local budgets are multifactorial. So in areas that we can begin to cut costs, we need to do so. One of the largest drivers is the Pennsylvania retirement system, and it's the salaries and the benefits of the employees. Those are large expenses. So we need to look for ways to cut expenses. One of the things that was discussed in the last finance committee was the fact, or it was actually during the budgeting process, was that our health insurance contracts would be up for renewal, and there might be some opportunity in those areas to find better resources for the healthcare because those benefits can be very expensive. So it's a matter of cutting costs where you can, so you have the money, both at the state level and at the local level. We've had an increase in enrollment from 4,300 in 1994 to 7,300 recently, except for the last year, that a lot of the students went to charter schools during the epidemic. But we've added 25 FTEs. That's not just salaries, that's salaries, healthcare, and retirement. So we have to really use our resources wisely so that we can do everything we need to do for the students.
Okay, thank you. Next is Leslie Elkin.
So I agree with other candidates about needing to look at state funding and certainly being as wise as we can be when looking at benefits, et cetera, for staff and administration. I would say also, as a resident and as a parent of a child who has gone through the district and received services, I was alarmed at the inappropriateness of Art McDonald pointing out a few years ago that it was the budget that was directed toward children with these needs that caused the need to raise taxes. I didn't feel that that was truthful, and it put a bullseye on programs that was unnecessary and inappropriate. So I would like that to never happen again. Also, as someone who looks at what faculty are being trained in, I've sat in a lot of faculty training, and we are invested in some very expensive faculty training. Not that the topics being covered are not necessary, but I think that we should be finding a more local, more cost-efficient way to educate the faculty. And I've spoken to other local leaders about this who would agree with me, whether they are our school board related or not. So we could certainly find some funding if we were wiser with what we were choosing to partner with to train our faculty. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Rachel Kill.
Thank you, Maggie. Let's talk about district finances in regards to special education, shall we? This is a large line item on our budget, and it does, in fact, increase as enrollment increases, as we would expect it to. There are two points I want to make about special education in regards to TE's overall budget. First, this money is unfairly villainized. How many times have you all heard the term skyrocketing special ed costs? Not just from sitting school board members and administration, but from some of the candidates on this call tonight. Meanwhile, there is an understandable fear by parents of retaliation for speaking up, which sadly makes us an easy group to target when it comes to expenditures. I'm here to tell you tonight that this is wrong. The second point I want to make is from a financial analysis viewpoint, it is very difficult, if not impossible, to go through our audits and understand exactly how this money is being spent. It's like looking at a black hole. What I mean by this is how much do we spend on lawyers? How much on actual administration and paperwork in special education? And how much is spent on actual instruction? We need to know how the money is being spent to find out if it is more or less expensive to bring some of these services in-house. We also don't know, for example, if the money for ESAs is allocated to the Special Education Fund or the General Fund. Why is this all so complicated? It doesn't need to be. We need to figure out how the money is being spent in order to better allocate our resources from state funding and determine appropriate measures for success. As a financial and credit underwriter who meets regularly with CFOs, auditors, and bankers in order to get a clear picture of my client's financial management skills, this task is right up my alley. And as a school board member, I will take great pleasure in diving into this further. I will also be an advocate for special education funding, since this is personal to me.
Okay, all right, thank you. And next would be Bill Nolan, but I don't believe he is on. Okay, we're going to move ahead to Mary Ann Pajoni.
I was the accounting manager for the Germantown Community Organizations. The first thing that I did was review their audits. Then I studied the reporting requirements needed to create the budgets and financial statements. I needed to comply with these requirements in order to have what's called a clean audit and for the budgets and financial statements that were reviewed by federal, state, and city agencies and from foundation grant makers, which we relied on for our operating funds. So if you want to see that description of what is required of a school district, and specifically TE school district, you can click on the TE website, our district, then budget, and that brings you to a link titled AFR, Annual Financial Report, Detailed Data for Revenues, Expenditures, Taxes, Debt, and Fund Balances Available by Fiscal Year. Now that link brings you to the PA Department of Education webpage. And further in, as you do a deep dive, you will see that there is a section with instructions and other information relating to the reporting of required data to the department, such as annual financial reports and general fund budgets. So when you look at that, and in regards to budget planning process, which has received some commentary at the board meetings, you will see that reviewing that data, the expected expenditures for special education support systems, services, are listed with an additional analysis that shows, as mentioned previously, the limitations imposed by state funding shortfalls relative to the rising costs for education services. So I bring that experience of having to, of involvement with the scrutiny of audits being audited by multiple governmental agencies, and I will be able to communicate that with the public as a school board member. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next is Robert Singh.
Thank you. So it's certainly no mystery why there's been escalating special needs cost of education. It's not a mystery. On the Pennsylvania School Board Association website.org, it clearly states that not only does the special education cost have increased since 2007, but the actual amount that the state has given has decreased. So you have a perfect storm where the amount of money that the state has given and the rising cost, which is a proven entity, are not meeting in the middle. If you clearly look at the district budget website, you can see that about 80% of the budget is made up from local sources. The amount that the state is giving is almost less than 15%. And the federal government, well, it's almost nonexistent. So the cost of the special education is real. It is not made up. The district isn't putting it on the table. But the question is, how do we move forward, right? We can always look back and see where we can identify what the costs are. Where are the costs going? Is it training? It's probably a very small portion of that budget. But the other part of that question is what personal experience or expertise can you bring? Well, besides my own personal business, I'd rather listen to experts, right? So I'd rather listen to the people like Moody that come into our district and are experts at financially assessing a district. And it's clear from their Moody's assessment that our district is strong. None of us like taxes. I don't. I know nobody here on this panel does or probably watching. But it is only a component of what we can do as a district. We can capitalize on our AAA bond rating that has been reaffirmed, even though that these things like budgets continue to be at the back of our mind. We live in a strong district, and we have to capitalize on the fact that we can find the money, perhaps not in raising taxes, but...
Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to Deanna Wong.
Hi, I just attended the recent financial committee meeting. So if anyone have listened to those meetings like I did for the past several years, you would notice a repeated pattern of under deficit budget and then magically turn into the surplus actual. So first of all, if I say we can manage our budgeting process better, we probably don't even have to talk about the tax increase. And this year, we have $5 million in that gap. So that is a mean fundamental problem with our current financial management by the school and administration. Is their way of doing the budgeting and as calculating all these expenditures is just not right. So that has to be addressed first. And oftenly, in the meeting, that I hear special ad expenses to be, you know, the ones to blame, and also the teacher's retirement fund, that is all this increasing, increasing expense that takes the heat and the blame. But I don't think that is the whole picture. I don't think that's right. There are many areas in our administration operation that can be looked into and to be leaned. We have keep increasing our number of administration staffs, and that expenses is just... and that expenses is just goes skyrocketing too. So I think more look into that areas is necessary, not only talking about all the necessary spending for the special ad program that supports our education need. So that's my take on for the financials. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. In accordance with the federal IDEA law, schools are required to report to the state the number of students who spend 80% or more of their school day with typical peers. As of December 2020, according to Penn data, only 62% of students in special education and T E S D were included 80% or more of their day in class with typical peers. Research shows that students with disabilities have better outcomes if they are educated in inclusive settings with their peers. Research also shows academic and social benefits to students without disabilities when students who are disabled are educated alongside typical peers. Do you believe the district should be doing more to improve the percentage of students who are included with typical peers? If so, what will you do to improve that statistic in T E S D to ensure more students with disabilities have access to typical peers and general education curriculum? And we will start with Deanna first.
Maggie, can I be excused and do the second one? Because my parents, my family just came in, so I actually lost your voice for a part of the question. So can I read the question in the chat and then do the second one? I'm sorry, I didn't get the whole question there.
I can read it again really quick, if that's okay?
Oh, sure, sure. Yes, I'm sorry. I just didn't capture the whole question. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I'll just read it again. So because I don't want to throw anybody off.
Sure, sure, sure. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
In accordance with the federal IDEA law, schools are required to report to the state the number of students who spend 80% or more of their day with typical peers. As of December 2020, according to Penn data, only 62% of students in special education in T E S D were included 80% or more of their day in class with typical peers. Research shows that students with disabilities have better outcomes if they are educated in inclusive settings. Research also shows academic and social benefits to students without disabilities when students who are disabled are educated alongside typical peers. Do you believe the district should be doing more to improve the percentage of students who are included with typical peers? If so, what will you do to improve this statistic in T E S D to ensure more students with disabilities have access to typical peers and general education curriculum?
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you for repeating that question. And after talking with parents, you know, from build and other areas with special ed children, that I have a much better, deeper understanding about the neurodiversity. And I strongly support and believe that having those kids in the regular classrooms and to be with their peers with a higher percentage of that participation will not only help those kids to navigate with their social abilities, their like peers, build that peers relationship. It will also benefit the general public of other kids to learn how to build that relationship and to be be willing to and feel comfortable to interact with those students in the way that they can understand that neurodiversity exists and then how to expose themselves and to learn that including all the parents like me that I am learning by talking to those parents and students. And so I'm totally supporting that, supporting that increasing the percentage. So what I think I can do is to talk to the teachers, talk to the build parents to understand what would be the best way to work for your children. You're the expert for your children. And then to talk to those special ed teachers to formulate a better program in the district that I can support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robert Singh.
Thank you. Yes, I do believe that it is important to include peers or students with their peers. And we have to look at what are other districts doing? If we haven't been able to figure it out, perhaps we can learn from other places that have less resources than we do to see what they're doing. We haven't figured it out yet and it's again about understanding that we're not always starting from the same place, right? This is the whole equity principle. Once we've recognized that we're not starting at the same place, what can we do to get these children up to the level that they're comfortable dealing with their peers? And if we're not able to do it, where can we find the resources? Yes, it's always about money. So should we be hiring more special education specialists? Yes, we probably should. Should we be hiring more oral reinfluency specialists? Yes, we probably should. And if so, if we are able to do that, is that going to translate to that child being able to integrate? Should we learn how to deal with emotionally children who have an emotional regulation part of their learning disability? And the answer is yes. I think perhaps talking with some parents, that is where our district has fallen a little bit short. So all of these things need to be increased and I think we can learn from other districts and identify those resources that we need to integrate the patients, the students into the population. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mary Ann.
This statistic about 62% of the students in special education is disappointing. However, must be tempered by the fact that it was correlated with December 2020, which is, has been impacted by, of course, the pandemic. However, with that said, I will refer to my experience as a foster parent. And in that experience, I have seen that children learn from everyday interactions with familiar people, places, experience and routines. And working with family members, caregivers and early education practitioners has helped me to, with our foster children, to help them grow and learn within an everyday environment. So inclusion of special education students affords the opportunity to participate in activities with non-special education student peers and will reflect their unique activities and values within the classroom. When a special education student is involved in the school and community, they strengthen the teaching and learning of all students. And so with that in mind, I certainly will work to improve that statistic so that at least goes to 80%, if not more, based on the wishes and needs of the individual student. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, well, I think Bill is still not with us. Sorry, I keep checking. Okay, Rachel, you are next.
Thank you, Maggie. This question pulls at my heartstrings since I know many parents personally, including myself, who have had to make the difficult decision to send their child to a school outside of their neighborhood in order to access services within the district. I guess we've come a long way, right? We no longer send students completely outside of the district, you know, if they have a learning difference or a disability. But we still need to work. We have a lot of work to do in order to make our classrooms more inclusive for all learners in the least restrictive environments. I mean, achieving this is going to fall in line with what I was saying earlier about the analysis of special education funding and determining which programs, if any, we can include in-house, which would lower expenses and improve inclusivity. We need to have high expectations. Using evidence-based instruction and inclusion are absolutely essential. I will also listen to groups who specialize in this like Peel, Everyone Reads PA, the Reading League of PA, among others, and make sure that the district is aligning their best practices to researched recommendations. Another thing I want to say that doesn't exactly answer your question, but that I'm currently doing is I was asked by the Devon Elementary School PTO to put together a courageous conversation series focused on inclusion for parents by parents. The one that I'm doing is going to involve a panel of parents of special needs children who are willing to share their stories and provide insight and education to parents of neurotypical children. The goal of this series is to educate the public about what it means to be a special needs family and how that is different from other challenges and also to provide resources to parents on how to teach their children to create a more inclusive environment for their peers with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leslie Elkin.
So I looked at this question personally also. So it should always be a school district goal to maximize inclusion. It is disheartening to see where our numbers are going, right? And that should alarm us and concern us and should be a priority, right? So I think that one way to move towards, move the numbers in the right direction would be looking to hire teachers with dual certifications, perhaps with a learning support degree along with what it is they have their other certificate in in the classroom. I would also say teacher training is the key, right? So if we have well-prepared teachers who understand inclusion and can present that in the classroom as an everyday experience for our learners, it becomes something that the students all can join in on. So if we are not like, I was looking at build TE's resources, right? You guys have exceptional resources available for the district to partner with. So I would say the district, besides, you know, looking at some of the organizations that Rachel talked about and like Dr. Singh mentioned with, you know, checking what other school districts are doing, 100% agree with that. We need to be partnering with groups that are here. So I would also say, you know, in my own experience, you know, I have classrooms with wheelchair-abled students, students on the spectrum. And this is part of the learning environment here at Eastern and it really does positively affect everyone. I see it in my own home with my son and the way he engages with others in the world, having been the brother of a sister who has had the learning experiences that she has had. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Susan Audrin.
First, I would ask for a report. Is that December of 2020 an anomaly? Or is that a trend? And then I would ask for the special educators to provide that report and then to identify reasons. What is the reason that we're not meeting that? And then I would ask for an action plan with measurable goals to report back to the board how they plan to correct this deficit.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Yolanda Allen.
So I pretty much agree with a lot of what has already been said, but I think sort of I've had an opportunity. I was speaking with some parents about what it means to have, like, for a classroom to be inclusive and what exactly does that entail? And I was able to speak to some teachers and they said, well, you know, in order for that to happen, you know, teachers have really have, they have to be trained on how to really, you know, teach kids. Because what I was told is that, you know, if you have kids in a classroom with varying abilities, you spend 15 minutes over here, 15 minutes over here on this group and 15 minutes in this group. And, you know, you really, and what you don't want to do is because we're trying to be inclusive, not really teach the different sets of students, right? And we want to make sure that the students have a full experience in the classroom. So I agree with Leslie in that, you know, this has to go back to teacher certification. It has to do a lot with the training that our teachers get. And I definitely think that kids need to be integrated in the classroom with varying learning degrees, you know. I would support it more, I think, in elementary school, a lot more in elementary school. As we move into some of the higher, you know, high school, it may be a little bit more difficult to do only because kids are, you know, going off into their little specialties, especially in high school and that kind of stuff. But certainly in the middle schools and even in, you know, middle school and elementary school, like definitely support inclusive classrooms. But I would be willing to, you know, learn more about, you know, how that could work in high school.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to move on to the next question. One of the obligations of a school board member is to provide oversight and to ensure the quality and academic outcomes of the education program for all students. What measures will you ask of the administration to understand T E S D educational programs' strengths and weaknesses? In other words, how would you measure or understand whether an educational program is effective or not? And we'll start with you, Yolanda.
Okay, so I think, you know, it's really interesting. I think TE does a really good job, you know, serving kids that, you know, have high abilities, AP classes and all of that. I think TE does, if you compare TE with other school districts, it does a really good job serving our kids with special needs in comparison to a lot of schools that, you know, I'm familiar with. I think the challenge, though, is sometimes the folks in the middle, right? So the 5% at one end, the 5% at the other end, it gets a lot of attention and it's what makes us special here in TE is that we try to meet kids where they are. I think the challenge again is kids in the middle. And when we talk about outcomes, I think it's important that we look at, you know, for our kids that are in the middle, what are their outcomes? You know, what, how many of those kids are, you know, going to trade school? How many of those kids are, you know, leaving and going into apprenticeships? I think, you know, we're really good at capturing how many go to college. But how many of those kids don't go to college? How are they faring academically? Looking at the least of these, so to speak, looking at the kids that have, that are in the, some of the academic courses. How are they faring? How are we doing with making sure that those kids are progressing along and that we create career pathways for those kids? Making sure that the kids that are in the academic classes who may not want to go to college, making sure that those kids have access to trade schools and how are we really tracking those kids? We do a great job again, tracking the kids that go on to college or high school graduation rate is great. But what about the kids that are in the middle? What about the kids that are further, you know, are, you know, the kids that are in the academic?
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Susan Audrin.
Okay, one of the concepts in nursing is, and medicine in general, is peer review. So I would compare that to a school district. How does TE school district compare to other similar districts throughout Pennsylvania, throughout the nation? And that is accomplished by many statistical analyses. How many graduate? How many are in the technical colleges? The PSSAs, those tests were designed to compare schools one to the other. The ERBs, how are our students performing on those tests? The math, the Keystone exams. What is the record there for how we're performing? Which can really inform us as to the quality of the teaching as well as the educational programs that we have. Thank you.
Okay, next is Leslie Elkin.
I agree with what some of the other candidates have said. I do think all students need to have clear knowledge and access to all career paths upon graduation, right? So that's definitely true. I would look at state testing, but it has limitations. We all know sometimes kids slack off when they're being tested and we know certain students are just not accurately, their information is not accurately collected by, you know, standardized or state testing. So that would be a piece of what I would look at. What I was thinking about, and I'm thinking about specifically for this year, we're trying to figure out, you know, what kind of learning loss we had, especially within at-risk communities within our students. um, at-risk communities within within our our um, our students. So honestly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing if teachers did something at the end of the year where we, they set aside time, um, the district set aside time for teachers to kind of do a final evaluation and had individual conferences with parents, right? And talked about, you know, here is where I see your student, here's what, you know, what I've gathered. Here are the strengths, here are spaces where I think we need to, we need to gain some traction so that when we hit the ground next fall or over the summer, according to what opportunities are available for students to engage in, we can start to to make up for some of the learning loss. So, you know, there are metrics we can check on students upon graduation to see how they're doing, you know, with SAT scores and where they're landing and all those things. I am all for honoring all students with, you know, their individual learning styles and their talents and skills, and it isn't all about the Ivy League schools, right? It's all about maximizing who they are as individuals. So I want to partner the teachers and the parents.
Okay, and next we'll hear from Rachel Kill.
Uh, thank you. I'll start off by saying from personal experience that IEP forms are very difficult to read and understand. They are not written in a language or even a sequence that makes sense for even highly educated individuals such as myself. This this section in my son's IEP that discusses his goals and metrics for achievement is currently actually subjective, and I would imagine this is the same for many other families. It is our responsibility as a district to conduct proper screening early on to make sure that children are accessing the right programs at the right times. Then we need to have a way to measure true success and development in these programs and be able to pivot if needed to continue to address their needs. Unfortunately, there's a conflict with administration and with what I just described. If we have excellent screening early on that identifies a reading or behavioral difference, then the district is on the hook financially to fix this, right? I'm not currently aware of any thorough and effective screening methods in place by our district. And in fact, I've heard from many families that learning differences like dyslexia were ignored for years while students suffering were given positive test scores and moved on to the next grade level despite not even being able to read. This situation is unacceptable and does not serve the best interest of our students. There are so many resources out there for TE to access and many involved parents that know way more about this than I do that are able and willing to educate the district on these resources. Why have we not been listening? Meanwhile, our special needs students are not reaching their full potential and sometimes failing as a result. We need to do better to ensure that the right programs are in place and real outcomes are monitored and monitored and measured accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, um, and I think we do not have Bill still, so I'm going to go to uh, Mary Ann. Pichoni.
Thank you. So I will echo what uh, Susan Audrin said, and I will add that um, I will be sure to advocate for a variety of methods to ensure that program strength and and also to monitor and overcome learning loss, such as providing teachers with training and support, utilizing paraprofessionals and specialty teachers to keep track of student work, using diagnostic testing and benchmark assessments, and planning for enhanced after-school tutoring. Now with that thought in mind, we must also consider that everybody, uh, each individual student, and especially those with special education programs will uh, come to this at a different, at varying levels. And so that individualized uh, work with the parents, with the families, will perceive that we have seen uh, the teachers and the administration work hard over the summer to provide these resources. We, of course, must be ever vigilant to ensure that we provide those programs at the highest level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Robert Singh.
There we go, unmuted. Um, so the most recent uh, education uh, committee meeting, uh, one of the presentations was on uh, specifically identifying some of these learning loss using the oral re-influency tests that were given in the spring of uh, 2021 and then uh, fall 2122, looking at grades one through grades four. Um, and with the admission that the Pennsylvania Department of Education basically said, look, this year or the past year and a half, it's been a very difficult year for everybody as we know, and therefore drawing conclusions about the uh, loss is really sort of a warning that we shouldn't really assess that. So the question is, when are we going to know how these children have suffered as far as a learning loss? But when you look at these numbers um, that was presented, that's available on the literacy page of the website, it shows that from grade one to grade two, from spring to fall, there was uh, still less than 80%, which is a recognized benchmark. It's felt about 78%. Grades two to grades three, um, and um, this is from the website, uh, from 83 to about 88%. So that was an increase in in those kids from grade two to grade three. And grade three to grade four, it was a non-statistical difference of around 85%. So the ones that seem to have suffered the most are those grade ones to grade two uh, students. So my point is, yes, we need objective measures. There's also an understanding that we are going to go back to the ERB assessments that have been used and passed to assess children. That was my understanding from the administration at the last uh, meeting. So that's uh, my answer to your question.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from Deanna Wang.
Yeah, growing up in China, we have taken a lot of more tests than here, than the students here in US, probably too much, I have to say. But, you know, I I believe adequate standard that test is still giving a good uh, benchmark evaluation for the outcome of any of the education educational programs. So I'm glad to see that the district um, bring the ERB back, and that was actually upsetting me to see that is they're not uh, implementing it. Um, so um, and also last year, uh, last school year, they made the PSSA optional that I I hope it will be more standardized for students all take it. So those standardized tasks will give a measurement and to for the parents like me to see where my kids placement compared to other peers, at least in the at the state level, or better to be at the national level so that if something fall behind, that we can pay, you know, bring our attention to it and find the uh, the resource uh, to help them uh, improve. And more importantly, if there is individual students and parents that feeling that their edu- uh, educational program doesn't really serve the outcome that they expect, and the school, uh, the teachers should work with the the parents and to understand, you know, where is lacking there and what is not working. So it's a partnership between the parents and and the schools, the teachers, and so I'm I'm all for like, you know, standard test testing that's at least assert the majority of the students and parents to have a quick measurement to understand where they are.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. National civil rights data suggests that students with disabilities are more than twice as likely to be disciplined in schools than their non-disabled peers. This includes suspensions and expulsions. How will you ensure the administration is implementing disciplinary policies policies that won't disproportionately affect students with disabilities and special needs? And let's start with um, Deanna.
Yeah, I I heard, yeah, I understand there were incidences in our school district and to place the disciplinary act towards certain students, and I don't um, for what I know, I don't think is actually a fair act to those students. Um, I think there should be a deeper look at, uh, you know, what the students was doing and why it's doing. It's not just the bluntly taking a policy and then to follow the policy. We're all human beings. There should be reasonable judgment before any of the actions taken. I think a open dialogue with the parents uh, for the situation and to understand the reasons of things uh, took place is more important and than to traumatize and traumatize the kids uh, with overdoing disciplinary actions. So I think we should actually look at the policies more closely and not to allow anyone using the policies uh, towards certain minority group, uh, you know, disadvantaged group. So that's my opinion. And I think school board should have better oversight for those kind of occurrence if it does happen again and not to just sit back and not to do anything. It should be a facilitator, it should be a governance that, you know, oversee all of this disciplinary act to be fair, to be reasonable. So I I believe that would be the school board role in those incidences. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Robert Singh.
Yeah, I think it just goes to, again, understanding that we're not all starting from the same place, seeing and understanding that the diversity applies to uh, special needs children, that the disability is not just um, something diagnosed, whether it's ADHD or a learning uh, disability, but there are also uh, emotional, again, regulation issues. And I think it has to do with training uh, with the teachers recognizing that. I think if you have someone who uh, understands that the disabilities are categorized into certain groups without an overlying theme that they can be fluid and they can move from one to another, and therefore that emotional outburst by that child uh, may perhaps is is part of the spectrum of where they are. And understanding that and having uh, somebody in the classroom that gets that can perhaps refrain them from adopting a disciplinary policy that applies to everybody. We all understand it's important to have a disciplinary policy. We under all understand the the possibility of zero tolerance, that if there are certain words said in a school, it triggers. But if it if the understanding of where that child is in their learning, both academically and emotionally by that teacher, perhaps it can be toned down and brought down that this is an emotional regulation issue instead of just a a threat or a warning that warrants a serious disciplinary action.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is Mary Ann Pichoni.
Uh, with national data, one must really do a deep dive to see if that is as impactful in our TE school district. Our student discipline policies are clearly marked, they're clearly defined, and they're and the actions taken for discipline are clearly defined and listed on the website. So we all know what will happen if a child, it needs to be disciplined. So what I would bring to that evaluation and that oversight of any disciplinary uh, policies or actions, et cetera, that needs to happen once again, comes from my experience as a foster care uh, parent. And so I'd like to share with uh, you some of the uh, child discipline procedures uh, that are listed in the discipline policy of uh, the Catholic Social Services uh, foster care program. And that includes uh, uh, children in foster care shall be directed with techniques that stress praise and encouragement. And this is the child discipline policy. Children in foster care may not be subjected to verbal abuse, derogatory remarks, or threats of removal from the foster home. And we uh, cannot, uh, are prohibited from uh, punishment uh, for um, uh, of another child or denial of meals, clothing, et cetera. So these uh, foster children that I have cared for have been uh, vulnerable. They have been um, and it has impacted their learning abilities. Uh, they come from insecure situations and I have been able to uh, bring together uh, that uh, child so that he or she, actually I only had one little girl. I had all boys to one little girl um, to uh, feel a self.
Okay, um, next, I I don't believe we have Bill on the line, so I'm moving to the next one, which is uh, Rachel Kill.
Thank you, Maggie. The subject of student discipline actually terrifies a lot of parents of children with social, emotional needs. They have a reason to be terrified. Right before the pandemic happened and everyone was forced out of schools for over a year, there seemed to be a pattern of administration actually calling the cops on very young children who did not actually pose a threat to anyone. When parents showed up to board meetings and asked why and how this happened, we never got any good answers that actually made any sense. I was not only horrified by what was going on on a personal level, I was also disgusted as a community member and terrified as a parent. So it goes without saying that I do not support police involvement for children with special needs, especially ones who are in elementary school and pose no physical threat. Shame on us for allowing this to happen in the first place, and it will forever be a dark mark on our history as a district. As a school board member, I will absolutely not support any policy that ends up with the calling of police on children. When it comes to discipline, we need to be proactive about this, not punitive. There needs to be conflict resolution training for kids and staff. If we're and if we're truly being honest, we need to face the reality that punishment doesn't always deter kids nowadays either. There needs to be a process in place that involves the teacher and the entire IEP team to diffuse the situation and assess the best course of action. We need to look out for our children and put their needs first and not scar them for life by treating them like criminals. This is just common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Leslie Elkin.
Uh, I I echo Rachel's sentiments 100%. Also, I I feel that this is a, this is a compassion and um, administration and and faculty education issue, right? So it involves um, understanding and it also involves um, having the the skills in place to to be able to to deal with situations appropriately when when they come up. Um, we need to keep kids safe and we need to make sure um, that, you know, there's safety in the classroom, certainly. But, you know, all children are different, all situations are unique, and there's to have a one-size-fits-all policy that teachers um, feel they need to adhere to, or the faculty um, you know, feels, you know, the administration feels that they need to to follow um, shows a a lack of a lack of flexibility and and understanding, obviously, of certain situ- situations that have gone on. Um, do the do the faculty and and administration need more training? Apparently so. Do we need to review the policies that are in place um, to to build them out further? Does there need to be some type of of specialist in place to deal with with these who has the knowledge base um, to appropriately handle them in ways that they have not been handled well in the past? That would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next Susan Audrin.
First of all, um, our disciplinary policies need to be uh, clear. They need to be enforced equitably and appropriately. So I don't know if there's currently a mechanism uh, that the school board has where these disciplinary measures are reported or tracked so that we can observe for any trends that are developing, so we can identify any areas of special education of faculty uh, that need to be uh, developed in order to more appropriately uh, administer discipline uh, in the school district.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll hear from Yolanda Allen.
So I again agree with a lot of what has been said. I think from a governance standpoint, I think it's important that the board, you know, um, the school board uh, receive reports in terms of uh, you know, the data, you know, how is uh, discipline metered out, right? Who's disciplined? And I think we need to receive those reports on a yearly or quarterly basis, right? Because that really determines the type of training, whether it's being sensitive to if if if, for example, we're, you know, um, disciplining a a a race of uh, kids with the, you know, a certain race more often than others, kids that are you know, have special needs more often than others. Um, and what, you know, and so I think from a governance standpoint, the thing that we need to always look at is the data, because we could have some one-offs, right? Um, and then we need to do, uh, so look at the the data, always looking at the data and how we're metering out discipline. And then second, we need to make sure that we're training our teachers and reviewing policies and, you know, helping our um, you know, um, helping our, just providing our teachers with the information that they need to um, to to really reach our students and to deal with our students. So that's my answer. To to really reach our students and to deal with our students. So that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. And I see, I believe that we have Bill Nolan on the line with us. And Bill, I'm going to reread the question to you because I think you just joined us and remind you that you have two minutes to answer this question. It is about discipline. It's also in the chat if you can see that. It says, national civil rights data suggests. That students with disabilities are more than twice as likely to be disciplined in schools than their non-disabled peers. This includes suspensions and expulsions. How will you ensure the administration is implementing disciplinary policies? That won't disproportionately affect students with disabilities and special education needs? And you can unmute yourself now if you if you want, Bill, or yeah. Sorry, Bill, can you figure out how to unmute yourself? I I think you're joining from a phone. Okay. Sorry, folks, I think he might still be having. Technical difficulties. So Bill, if you can hear me and. You can get unmuted, we will let you jump in on the next question. Okay. I am muted. I apologize. I will read the next question. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. Recently issued an urgent warning declaring the mental health crisis among children so dire. That it has become a national emergency. They said in a letter released last week that rates of childhood mental health concerns were already steadily rising over the past decade. But the coronavirus pandemic, as well as the issue of racial inequality, has exacerbated the challenges. Do you feel enough has been done in T E S D to address mental health concerns of our students? And what will you do as a board member to help address these issues? And I just want to also say that this is probably the last question that we will have time for. And then we will go into closing statements. And we will start with. With Yolanda. And I apologize, I've lost Yolanda on my screen. Did she? Fall off? Anyone, anyone? Does anyone see her? Oh, wait, I'm gonna.
She's in the meeting right now.
She's joining us right now. Yolanda. Oh, no. Looks like she's had, oh, man, the internet. Yolanda, can you hear us? Are you having trouble? She's having trouble. Okay. You're muted, so I can't hear you. Oh, there we go. I can hear you now. Yes.
Okay, great.
Have a chance to hear the question or would you like me to read it again? We've also got it in the chat.
Okay, let me. Well, you can read, I'm sorry, I'll read it.
That's okay. I will. I will read it again.
Okay.
The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. Recently issued an urgent warning declaring the mental health crisis among children. So dire that it has become a national emergency. They said in a letter released last week that rates of childhood mental health concerns were already steadily rising over the past decade. But the coronavirus pandemic, as well as the issue of racial inequality, has exacerbated the challenges. Do you feel enough has been done in T E S D to address mental health concerns of our students? And what will you do as a board member to help address these issues?
This is, this is a. This is an issue that is really close to my to my heart because, you know, like so many. Parents of teenage girls. This last year has been extremely difficult for my teenagers. And I've heard that. Across, I mean, I haven't even talked to a parent who with of of teenagers who haven't, especially girls. Who haven't had some type of challenge, mental health challenge with their girls. On top of that. When we try to get counseling for our daughters or for our kids. There are none available. They're all booked up. This was all last year, all of 2020, all of 2021. But I must say that when I reached out to the school. I found them to be very helpful. The counselors there were really trying to help me and other parents find. Specialists for my kids, for other kids that I know. Providing us with resources. So I can't speak for everyone else. I just know that this was something that is very close to me and my family. And I did reach out to the school and they were able to provide me with the resources that I needed for my girls. Now, was it counseling? They even had counseling, but was it? Regular counseling? No. It was, you know, once every, you know. Couple of weeks until I found someone outside of the school to talk to my girls. Just to help them with the whole teenage stuff, all the teenage stuff that they were going through. And being on social media and feeling some kind of way about themselves and all of that, all the normal. So we, because of COVID, we don't know how much of it is just being a teenager. Versus how much of it is social media versus, you know, just not being with your peers. I just think that. But the question is, do we think that TE is doing enough? I think they're doing what they're what they can. I think.
Um, we're going to move on to the next candidate, Susan Aldrin.
Thank you. I would ask the counselors to make a presentation to the board. As far as the number of students that they are. Counseling and the caseload that they're carrying. Do and that would inform us whether we need to really add additional counselors to help our students. I would suggest even having a workshop between pediatric mental health counselors. And parents so that the parents can ask questions of these specialists as to how to how to recognize. Areas where they're. Might be experiencing difficulty. What are the early signs that they need additional help? I would start there, you know, where are we? You've just mentioned that there is a crisis. All right. Well, how is that occurring there in TE School District? And how can we help the parents? And how can we establish a dialogue between the counselors and the parents in the school? So that we're sure we are meeting those needs of the children. Because they have increased. COVID has been hard for the children and families. We've suffered so much. During this crisis.
Okay, thank you. Um. Next is Leslie Elkin.
So this topic has a lot to do with the reason why I decided to run for school board. So. Last year, when we were, you know, midst pandemic at the university level. We had gone back in person with significant safety precautions in place. And I was in the classroom with my students. And I had university students thanking me for being in person and the district had not. Made plans to come back and I I just thought I had a lot to contribute to. You know, move the district forward in in getting us back to a place where where we were in person. So I think that was so important to the children with the isolation. I I don't mean to be negative in this next piece, but I think we're still in process trying to evaluate. The significant issues that that are going on with children. I'm seeing at the university level. Students having trouble re-engaging academically, re-engaging socially. I'm seeing a significant rise in depression and anxiety from from prior years. As as a continual wave of of what's going on. So my thought would be. Something similar to what Susan said, I would want staff to have an in their next in-service. If they could bring in some pediatric specialists to make them even more aware. Of what to be looking for with children who are continuing to have issues, whether they're they're academic or or personal. And encouraging the parents to be engaged and find resources also because we all want to take the best care of our children. So I I don't think it's a concern that's over. I think it's a concern that is ongoing. So if if we can get teacher training on this immediate need, I'm 100 100% for it. And so I think TE is doing what it can. I think we need to be vigilant though, as as we are here at the university level. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Rachel Kill.
I'm so glad we're talking about mental health because it's actually the main reason I found the strength personally to put myself out there as a candidate. And do something as crazy as going on national news to talk about it. I've been speaking to local therapists who all confirm that this situation is dire, even in TE. With suicide rates three times what they were pre-pandemic. I was also very saddened to read this week about how the mental health crisis among children has been declared a national emergency. I can only imagine that this mental health crisis is hitting the special needs community the hardest. Who already struggles with this at a higher rate than typical peers. We need to devote resources that put our children and their mental health first and be proactive instead of reactive. We are in uncharted waters right now with this mental health emergency, much like we were when COVID-19 forced our schools closed. We need school board members who are willing to say that they will make this a priority during their time serving on the board. Instead of hiding behind local guidance and authorities that are not putting children first. We have a lot of resources as a district and we can use them to improve. Our students' mental health, but instead we seem to be focused on a lot of other things. When you go to the district's website, you can easily find information on COVID-19 testing. Flu vaccines and of course the impending capital improvements to Conestoga High School. I think we need to be focusing on this more than we are, especially since it will take a long time for us to see improvements. Improving mental health of our students is something that I will focus on front and center as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill, I think that you are on because I think I see your phone number. So can you unmute yourself so that you can answer the question, please? And you have two minutes to respond. And I think if you're accessing it from a phone. There's just an unmute button that you need to click. Okay, he's still not unmuting. Bill, if you know how to use the chat, if you could message us and let us know that it's you. And maybe try to get some help to unmute yourself. Okay, we're running out of time, so I've got to move on. Mary Ann, do you want to go next?
Yes, thank you.
Are next.
That the mental health is of grave concern to me. That rash of suicides in Downingtown and Coatesville. There was such a fear that it would cascade into our district. We have seen suicides, well, I have during my students, my children's tenure in TE schools. See those suicides in other districts, but they were in relationship to their friends, et cetera. So. That is a major concern for me. Now, thinking and remembering that as a foster parent. I have I have worked with and experienced with emotional and developmental distress. Of foster children and as well as the loss of security. And so with the training that I bring to the school district. I have developed an emphasis on a sense of trust and security. A sense of autonomy, a sense of initiative, a sense of accomplishment. A sense of identity and a sense of intimacy. In order to be able to relate to a counselor or to a parent and to have them recognize. What may be impactful on their mental health. Another impactful moment is the high degree of expectation and of academic achievement here in TE. And so we must. Make sure that we can see the. Direction that a student may be taking and all the warning signs that may show us how impactful all of these pressures.
Okay, the next candidate, Robert Singh.
Thank you. Like most of you, as Yolanda had mentioned, who are home with their children, I was home with. A senior at the time, a sophomore at the time and a freshman in college and. Certainly at times I wish I had a bigger house. But I think recognizing part of this is it starts at home. Yes, as parents, we are the primary caregivers of our child and our teachers and students in school. Are adjuncts. They're there to provide them with the emotional support, the educational support as well. But also the recognition that they're spending eight hours, nine hours a day with our children. While most of us are lucky if we see them two to four hours a night. So we do ask a lot of our teachers and our counselors. And as Susan Aldrin mentioned earlier about peer review. I think one of the ways I can help, we can help is board members because that's our primary, the primary question. As board members, we should have a collection of our counselors come to us. And tell us what are their findings? What are they seeing? What are they hearing? From the cohort of children that are coming to them? What do they need? Because that is what we do as school board. We give our teachers the resources to take care of the children. To give them both the educational component as well as the guidance that is needed for this. So as a board member, what I would do is I'd make sure we get a report from the counselors of where where they stand. Where are we? It is a crisis. It's a crisis nationally and it's potentially a crisis here in TE as well.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Deanna Wong.
Yeah, talking about mental issues, I agree with everybody just said, it is our top priority. I lost one of my, one of my very close friends that lost her son. When he was in senior year in Conestoga a few years ago and I watched the boy grow up from toddler to the young adults and then. Watch him like, you know, lost his life due to depression. It was really heartbreaking. And imagine like, you know, the past pandemic year, how much of that impact to our young adult is imaginable? So I agree that this is top priority we have to address. Our school has done, our counselors has done a wonderful job to serve our students to the best they can. However, I believe there is still room to improve. And I agree with Susan that we really have to do assessment, a very thorough assessment to understand. How how severe the problem is locally in our schools and what is the? The composition of the students that's seeking such support? Is there cultural background that plays as part of the problem? Is there language, is there family? There's very diverse aspect of the issues. So not only the student need to be supported and also parents. Especially the minority parents with different culture background or language barriers and. They have a probably need more support than others. So we have to be very. Open minded to include those needs as well. So I would say assessment first, understand where the problem is. And then from there, we can look for the solutions altogether. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for answering the questions and now we're going to move into our final statements. Again, as a reminder, you get two minutes to say whatever you like to wrap up the conversation and we will start with Deanna.
Okay. Thank you so much for B O T and for this wonderful, wonderful opportunity to speak to the public on this platform. And from the interaction that I had with some of the B O T parents. I developed this huge respect for this parent group. Your dedication to your children's education and overall wellbeing is such a model to all of us. So I really appreciate.
Your dedication to your children's education and overall well-being is such a model to all of us, so I really appreciate. It changed my view of many things. I realized that very importantly, that it is to have this open dialogue, direct dialogue to, to understand that we may see things only from one angle, and we teach each other to see the things from different angle. So I wanted to continue to make myself available, to listen to your stories, to your suggestions, and to your perspectives. I will commit to advocate for the parent groups to regain their right to support your members as an important partner in collaboration with your child's education with school. And it is the honesty, accountability, compassion, and devotion to the public service that brought me here to take on this big challenge, running for the school board. I will continue to carry those characters through my role of being this public servant. Shall I be elected, I'm doing my very best to serve this community. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Robert Singh.
Thank you. Tonight, I hope I was able to answer some questions through the special end of special education perspective, and I thank Bill for the opportunity to do so and for the work that you continue to do in our district. As I, as I stated, not, not all of us start from the same place. But equity demands we help those achieve their own results that they want. There's not a common goal for everyone, but everyone can have and should have the resources available to them to achieve their own goals. As a public education system, we must find a way to break down the barriers for all our children, whether that barriers race, gender, economic status, learning differences, both on a gifted or as an unlimited basis, and sexual orientation. These are not choices our children make to be in a specific group or socioeconomic class, it just is. We, the adults, are charged with making their world a better place and giving them the opportunity to do so themselves. On November 2nd, I'm asking for your vote, so we can continue to preserve our excellent educational system and find common ways to further improve it that benefits all the kids and our, and our community as a whole.
Thank you. Next, Mary Ann Pachoni.
Thank you. I want to thank Build for this opportunity. And I also want to thank the, all the organizations, parent organizations, booster clubs, et cetera, that have helped my, my children to advance in their life. Namely, my daughter Camilla, who is now a social worker with Delaware County Child Services, that came from TE schools' sense of values and paying forward in social environment. Next, my daughter Anna Marie, who went on to be a national champion, lacrosse champion, out of being a co, co-captain for the Conestoga Lacrosse Team. And that was helpful with the sense of good sportsmanship that the coaches have provided and teammates. Next, my son Amadeo Joseph, Joe, who is now a analyst and went on to a excellent career in computer software engineering, being with the academics that he received from TE. And last, my daughter Beth, who encompasses it all and is now a teacher at Springfield. So with the opportunity to be a school board director, I'll be able to pay back forward, pay forward all the opportunities that our family has had in Tridifern East Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna try Bill again. Bill, if you can unmute, and just to let everybody know, because some people have asked me in the chat, we can unmute someone, we can invite them to unmute themselves, so. And we have done that. So Bill, if you can hear us and you can unmute, this is your opportunity for your two minutes to say something to the group. Okay, and it doesn't look like that's happening. Okay, so I'm moving on to Rachel.
I would like to thank the members of Build for putting together this forum, and I'll reiterate my qualifications as a school board candidate. I have a strong financial background, which is a skill that is lacking on the current board. I've already been attending meetings and working with the community to increase financial literacy and involvement in financial decisions. I will also promise to stop the villainizing of the special education part of our budget. I am a mother of two young children, and I have a long road ahead of me in this school community. I've recently been asked by members of the Devon Elementary School PTO to lead a series of courageous, courageous conversation series for parents in the district specifically in regards to inclusivity of children with learning and neurological differences. I look forward to leading this discussion and hope to implement the same format for future use at schools outside of Devon. I am not a politician, I am a parent. I don't believe national politics have any place in our schools. As I stated earlier, before being asked to run, I had no involvement in politics. It's important to understand the true motivation behind all candidates who are running. What do they have to gain? What do they have to lose? Who is really gaining or losing? If the answer is their political party, run in the other direction and do not fill out that circle. For me, this is all about improving the community I live in after witnessing the failure of our school board to put children first. Thank you again for the opportunities to speak tonight and for helping us learn more about Build and all that you do for our community.
Okay, thank you. Next is Leslie Elkin.
I also want to thank everyone for your time tonight, for your consideration as I run for, for Region One School Board Director. So I hope I've been able to express clearly tonight how I'm gonna be an advocate for you and your children. I have sat in those IP meetings with the district. I've had really tough conversations with the administration over the years, and I have been a classroom teacher, working with all learners. So I also want to say clearly, when it comes to policy 1131, I will work with you to repeal it. I feel that once it's repealed, you will be more appropriately able to advocate and support your children as learners in this school district. So I'm, I'm also very grateful to, to learn more about this group, having gone through the experience with my daughter alone, it was, it was a very isolating experience. And I, I'm grateful this, for this group, I'm grateful for the resources that you offer to each other, to your children, and also to the district, and I look forward to partnering with you further in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Audrin.
Yes, for me, the kids are number one. That's the reason I am running for school board, is because I'm concerned about the students. I will support the continued and multifaceted evaluation of the students to identify any learning losses, as well as to identify any emotional, social, emotional needs that they might have, and advocate that those resources would be provided. I would also be in favor of the continued use of the ERBs, so that that allows us to intervene as quickly as possible to identify children that might need some extra help. I'll listen respectfully to parents, particularly those with special needs, to ensure that, that they have a voice and that the administration does provide the resources that they need. Also want people to know that I have been active politically since 2016. And I have already advised the Democratic Committee, East Town Democratic Committee, that I am resigning all official functions as of November the 3rd, regardless of whether I, I win this election or not. If I win, I will serve all constituents, regardless of their party, their race, their ethnicity, or their faith. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Yolanda Allen.
So I would also like to thank Build TE for the work that you do and for putting this forum together. It's because of organizations like yours that, you know, our kids have advocates outside of the school and our, and our school district has gone as far as it already is. I am a passionate advocate for the emotional, social, and educational well-being of young people, of young people. I am the only candidate in Region One who has leadership, governance, administrative, and policy experience. I bring to this role a keen understanding of government systems and how to make them better, how to hold the administration accountable to the goals that we set, and how to effectively evaluate outcomes, whether that's academic outcomes or budgetary outcomes. I have proven experience to govern as a leader and work effectively with the administration and colleagues to move our district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes all of our statements from all of our candidates. And I just want to take this opportunity to, to thank each and every one of you for participating tonight and for, for being a volunteer to even run for school board, right? I mean, this is an unpaid position, and you give of your time and your expertise. And I just want to thank you personally, each and every one of you, for putting yourselves out there and for running to represent each of us here tonight. I also want to remind our members to please vote, the election is on Tuesday. So, you know, we don't advocate for any particular party or candidate, but we do advocate that people vote. It is important, this is an important election, as all elections are. And we also want to let people know, we have recorded this session, we will be posting the full forum on our website and on our Facebook page. And we will also be distributing the URLs, the, the Facebook pages and, and websites of the candidates who have sent them to us, so that if any citizens have any questions or want to see more about these individual candidates, they can. And I would imagine through those avenues, you can reach out directly to the candidates. I'm sure they would love to hear from constituents or potential constituents. So that's all I have for tonight, and unless my other co-leaders want to say a thank you, I think we will say goodbye. So thank you all for spending these two hours with us. I think I did pretty good, it's only 9:05, so.